Before our meeting begins tonight, we will have an indication offered by Commissioner Lockhart, followed by the Pledge of Independence.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us gather here today on this snowy day. I wish safety and compassion for all of our citizens on this day, and that today we gather to do the best that we can for the citizens of Sandusky.
Amen.
Amen.
Father, we are in the municipal life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with the end of this world.
Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll case?
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Watt?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of 13/2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Drabody?
I move that we accept the minutes of the November 13th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Sir.
Motion, second. Discussion. Not objection, motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, motion is approved. Mr. Lockhart, do you have something to say?
I was just going to say excuse Mr. Poole.
Oh, my understanding is Mr. Poole is running 10 minutes late and will be here just a few minutes.
However, that works.
If he doesn't, we'll circle back. Okay. Audience participation, anyone wishing to address the Commission on any of our regular agenda items, please step to the microphone and share with us your name, address, and thoughts.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first concern is, or issue is, on the consent agenda. This is a personal concern of mine that we're starting to maybe see a few things that are on the consent agenda that shouldn't be on the consent agenda. Agenda in particular would be item number D, which is an amendment to the appropriations for 2018. I don't know if you guys, if there's any thoughts on that when you get to it. The other issue is an issue from the City Manager's report for this evening, and I don't have the exact figure, but it looks like we're spending some 2018 sidewalk replacement and repair program dollars on the repairs to the mixed street pier. And my issue with that would be that in the past, the leaseholders at Battery Park Marina were responsible for any repairs to that pier. As a matter of fact, they've done some additions over the years to that pier, adding sidewalks, adding fences to keep the public out of the Marina, you know, as it is a private Marina. And I would have thought that at least part of that funding would have came from the leaseholders of Battery Park Marina. And I think I brought that up here before at the Commission meeting, and the answer I got was that the city was working towards that goal, is to have them, you know, kick in at least partial payment for that, so that we're not using those dollars in an area that we really shouldn't be using them in, where we should be using them in the neighborhoods for sidewalk replacement. So I assume that the City Manager is going to give a report on that tonight. It is his report, so if you maybe guys could discuss that at that time, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission on any of our regular agenda items? Not then. We have a number of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
Someone?
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Not objection, motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, before we get to the consent agenda items, are there any that anyone would like to have removed and placed on the regular agenda?
I'd like to have B and D removed from consent. Really consent agenda.
B and D are removed. Any others? Mrs. Cresser, would you present the modified consent agenda then, please?
Yes. Item A is authorization for the Sandusky Municipal Court to make application for a technology grant with the Supreme Court of Ohio. And item B is annual payment to the Ohio EPA for licensing to operate the Guyland Waterworks.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda items, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances under Resolutions A and C as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances, ordinance in Resolution A and C, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Just notification, your motion was with respect to A and C as originally numbered, and that got modified to A and B, but I think we all understood what you meant, so just put this so the record's clear. Any discussion? Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Now on the legislation and resolution, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Those matters are approved. We should present what then would be, I guess, the former consent A, now item one.
Yes, this would be an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with State Collection and Recovery Services LLC of Sandusky, Ohio, for debt collection services for the Sandusky Fire Department and Code Enforcement Division for the period January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move to adopt this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I wondered if staff could tell me exactly how this would work going forward and what the impact is on the citizens as to how they'll perform the service.
I would refer to, I don't know if either Matt or John is in the best position to...
I'm happy to speak as it relates to code enforcement in particular, if that works.
Yeah, it's all chips here, sorry, didn't see it. It's not... I was looking for rec, and I didn't see him.
You're wondering who's going to have to choose to go forward. It's the last one.
Go ahead. I can start. Through the Commission President to Commissioner Lockhart and the rest of the Commissioners, you know, one of the questions we get asked a lot of times to folks who are appropriately and responsibly paying things like rental registration, administrative penalties is what is happening to the folks that aren't paying. So the city needs to show diligence, effort in going after and trying to secure through any means necessary delinquent rental registration administrative penalties. In the past, historically, we were able to assess those to the real estate tax bill. There was an auditor's opinion some years ago that limited municipalities' ability to assess real estate taxes for things like administrative penalties and rental registrations. So this is our effort to secure those delinquent penalties, which are in the tens of thousands collectively, at least for code specifically. So this is revenue that's going to be collected, that's going to go back into the coffers to enhance and let us expand things like our rental registration program and to allow us to continue to maintain our existing staffing and performance levels and service levels within the code enforcement department. So again, this is trying to maintain a level playing field for folks that are diligently and responsibly paying those fees and have historically throughout the years. So again, this is sort of what is left is municipalities' collection ability now that we are no longer able to assess the real estate tax bill.
That's what pretty much our EMS billing, the people that are delinquent in our billing, I assumed, and we just teamed up with code enforcement to, with this company, to proceed with getting the fees collected for ambulance services.
So we had collected those fees and turned them over to, for collection in the past, and this is a continuation of that, but we did in recent times add the code enforcement piece and rental registration piece.
That's the difference.
Additional questions or comments? Well, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please, the former D, the consent agenda.
Yes. This is an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Five to Ordinance 18-066, passed by the City Commission on March 26, 2018, making general appropriations for fiscal year 2018, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Let me address the first question in terms of why I've been placing these in recent months, years now, on the consent agenda. These are items, as Mr. Soloway has explained to us, where we have already appropriated the money, and what we are doing is we're essentially cleaning up the paperwork so that the budget corresponds to the actions that we've already taken with the body. So it's not a discretionary thing, and it just, it's something we keep going through, and we never really draw much in terms of questions, and there's never any disagreement about it. So I started placing those items on the consent agenda after we had that public conversation with Soloway to the effect that, you know, these are, there really isn't a lot of choice in this. We've already spent the money the way that we had voted. So we can change that policy, but that's why I started placing the consent agenda about a year ago.
I was just going to add to that. Basically, if you went back in time about a year ago, we explained at length at one of the meetings, the process behind this, and obviously if there's any questions, reach out to any of us at any time to answer any questions. And obviously, this is number five, and there will be a number six at the last meeting of the year. I think we talked about the frequency, about every other month we would see these, and we've been pretty consistent with that, so no changes anticipated in that.
Budget items are always very sensitive, and I want the public, I mean, I think periodically we just need to have this conversation. This is why we do this, because we're not sweeping something under the rug. This is, these are items that we've already discussed and voted on, so...
Correct.
Further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
This is D, well, would have been...
Now two, yeah.
Now two, okay. And they, what is this, I don't know who's going to answer this question, but what all will this appropriation cover and the time period to which it would take effect? Is this into this year's budget, into next year's budget?
Just this year's budget. Yeah, salt purchases is one example. We budgeted a certain amount for salt, and we've been purchasing some that exceeded what we budgeted, so we need to reappropriate additional funds. That's probably the textbook example of why we do this.
And in this, I'm trying to look at it here, and in this, it's the chip, chip program, revolving load, shoreline drive, is that right? Shoreline drive and...
Like some funds, we had budgeted money that we won't spend this year, so we would reduce those budgets for this year. That's what you'll see. You'll see more of a cleanup on the last one, there'll be a lot more of those.
You budgeted $250,000 for shoreline?
Yeah, we had a higher number, I believe, earlier, because we thought maybe the construction would have started already this year, when we did the budget back in March.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance declaring three ISG K-1000 thermal imaging cameras. Serial numbers K1A1239EV, K1K1211EV, and K1K1238EV. As unnecessary and unfit for city, presumed in Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the City Manager to purchase three Bullard T3X thermal imaging cameras and accessories from Family Fire Equipment of McAnusville, Ohio, for the Fire Department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Watt?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Over the weekend, Mr. Wobser, Jason, the three of them, Ms. Watt, you were included on this too. I had recalled, and you indicated that was correct, that we do still plan, master planning for Huron Park. It is a park that's quite large, it's a very important park in terms of visibility and the number of residents it serves, and that I thought this might, this investment in playground equipment might await that period of time, but you indicated that really this is some of the very worst equipment in the city. We need to get to this now as opposed to waiting, and that this still fits within the, you know, the parameters of what we might do in terms of a master plan. So I appreciate that. I just want folks to know that there is still, I want to remind, because we've had this kind of discussion at the table, I just couldn't remember for certain until I reached out to you, that we still do plan to do a digger, a deeper dive into what we're doing at Huron Park, and this is an interim measure, it's not all that there is to be expected in Huron Park.
Yes, through the Commission President to the Commission, we do have big plans for Huron Park, really three of our sort of significant neighborhood parks. We have long-term plans to do master plans for, and that includes JC, which will actually happen this year, and then Huron Park and Churchwell Park in the South Side, which will happen over the next few years. When we had Parks and Rec do an objective evaluation of the condition of all of our playgrounds as part of our playground replacement program, Huron Park checked in, and we also get a lot of feedback on the condition of some of the challenges there. So this is really a replacement, although they were very thoughtful, Public Works and Recreation in deciding how to make the replacement. In addition to that, we had some pressing repairs that needed to be made to the splash pad there, so we did think it was prudent to go ahead and make those. And then the broader questions, which I know you mentioned, is to traffic and everything else. We have to do a big effort for Warren Street over the next few years in that area as well, and so we'd like to combine Warren Street and Huron Park to really look at how traffic flows through there and how we can make that a much better space into the future. But we did not want to wait, because this is a really well-used park in the middle of the city in pretty bad shape, to bring the equipment, which we know will continue to exist there, up to our current standards.
Thank you. Commissioners, additional questions or comments? Mr. Poole, welcome.
Thank you.
You didn't miss any excitement yet, so the, we, as Mrs. Cresser is indicating, two of the items came off the consent agendas, so what was now, what was before number two was now number four, and that's the piece of legislation that's under discussion. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Yes, five is a resolution approving the submission of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Office of Coastal Management for financial assistance through the fiscal year 2020 Coastal Management Assistance Grant Program for the Paddle-Sandusky-Kuwanis Park Project for the Recreation Department, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Watt?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Let me address the first question in terms of why I've been placing these in recent months, years now, on the consent agenda. These are items, as Mr. Soloway has explained to us, where we have already appropriated the money, and what we are doing is we're essentially cleaning up the paperwork so that the budget corresponds to the actions that we've already taken with the body. So it's not a discretionary thing, and it just, it's something we keep going through, and we never really draw much in terms of questions, and there's never any disagreement about it. So I started placing those items on the consent agenda after we had that public conversation with Soloway to the effect that, you know, these are, there really isn't a lot of choice in this, we've already spent the money the way that we had voted. So we can change that policy, but that's why I started placing the consent agenda about a year ago.
I was just going to add to that. Basically, if you went back in time about a year ago, we explained at length at one of the meetings, the process behind this, and obviously if there's any questions, we reach out to any of us at any time to answer any questions. And obviously, this is number five, and there will be a number six at the last meeting of the year. I think we talked about the frequency, about every other month we would see these, and we've been pretty consistent with that, so no changes anticipated in that.
Budget items are always very sensitive, and I want the public, I mean, I think periodically we just need to have this conversation, this is why we do this, because we're not sweeping something under the rug. This is, these are items that we've already discussed and voted on, so...
Correct.
Further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
This is D, well, would have been...
Now two, yeah.
Now two, okay. And they, what is this, I don't know who's going to answer this question, but what all will this appropriation cover and the time period to which it would take effect? Is this into this year's budget, into next year's budget?
Just this year's budget. Yeah, salt purchases is one example. We budgeted a certain amount for salt, and we've been purchasing some that exceeded what we budgeted, so we need to reappropriate additional funds. That's probably the textbook example of why we do this.
And in this, I'm trying to look at it here, and in this, it's the chip, chip program, revolving load, shoreline drive, is that right? Shoreline drive and...
Like some funds, we had budgeted money that we won't spend this year, so we would reduce those budgets for this year. That's what you'll see. You'll see more of a cleanup on the last one, there'll be a lot more of those.
You budgeted $250,000 for shoreline?
Yeah, we had a higher number, I believe, earlier, because we thought maybe the construction would have started already this year, when we did the budget back in March.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Watt?
I move that we recommend the hiring of Trevor Hayburger as full-time city attorney.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Heyburger, I've observed you to grow immeasurably in this position, three and a half years you've been with the city, and I think that you are more than capable of handling this. You've been a good advisor to us, to Mr. Wobser, to the department heads, I've watched those interactions, and you've learned how to do it, and I think you've done a great job for the city, so thank you for being agreeable to step up and take that job.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Watt?
I'd like to also echo Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, your comments, and I like when I call you, that you get back with me. I don't wait two or three days. You know, I call down there, get a page, that's important to us, you know, we don't sit around and wait a day or two, so that was key, and I'm glad that you got this job. Okay?
Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And that, that resolution is adopted. Item number...
Mr. Chairman, before you go forward, I'd like to go back to this just to clarify my mind. I'm reading from the documentation, the estimated cost is $531,000, of which $225,000 will initially be paid with city funds. We've already paid the money, and then if awarded, reimbursed through the program. What, how's that work? Explain to me how we, is that, do I just misinterpret it? I just misunderstand what it says?
I think what he's saying is assuming the grant was awarded, we are going to basically pay the full cost of the project, however, we would be reimbursed for whatever that grant portion is. So we've not paid anything.
Okay.
I think he's just explaining, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Jason is basically saying how it would work if we got the money, that we would spend the money and then reimburse for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't understand it completely. Thank you.
Item number six.
Yes, item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Brown and Caldwell of Independence, Ohio, for the wastewater treatment plant, Barrick County Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed city hall signage and wayfinding project, interior signage, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Mr. Chairman, have you heard this communication? How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second. It's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Obstand.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted and that completes our regular items and we turn the report over, or the meeting over to you, Mr. Whoopser, for your report.
Thank you, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with the donations. A one thousand dollar donation was received from the Remember Cruisin' Car Club as well as sponsor Mona Pizza for the city skate park. The funds are to be used for maintenance and/or future purchases at the skate park. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
It's a motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Well, thanks for that generous gift.
A two hundred dollar Kroger gift card was donated to the Sandusky Fire Department on behalf of the residents of Harborview Apartments Senior Living. The fire department plans to pay it forward and buy groceries to pass out to those in need in the Sandusky area. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation as well.
So.
It's been a motion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Again, well, thanks.
Moving on to new and old business, starting with administration. An update on the law director search. We did solicit applications and received a lot of applications for the position and we also were monitoring very closely Trevor Heyburger's performance in the role of acting law director for the last five months. Trevor did an exceptional job and ultimately, when I asked directors how their workflow was working in their day-to-day activities with the law department, everyone was very complimentary and there was a lot of support for Trevor as the full-time law director. Therefore, based on that, as well as Trevor's longtime commitment to Sandusky, he's a Sandusky High School grad, he's already a Sandusky resident, his children are members or students at the Sandusky City Schools. In fact, you know, Trevor started in our law department as an assistant three and a half years ago, but before that was commuting well over an hour every day to Napoleon to be able to continue to live in Sandusky, but to support his family through that position. So I know this is a dream job for Trevor and based on the totality of that, my recommendation is to promote Trevor to the position of full-time law director and per the charter, I'd like to ask for a motion from the city commission to approve that recommendation to formalize Trevor's role as the law director of the city of Sandusky.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we recommend the hiring of Trevor Heyburger as full-time city attorney.
Second. It's been a motion and second discussion. Heyburger, I've observed you to grow immeasurably in this position, three and a half years you've been with the city and I, I think that you are more than capable of handling this. You've been a good advisor to us, to Mr. Whoopser, to the department heads, I've watched those interactions and you, you've learned how to do it and I think you'll do a great job for the city. Thank you for being agreeable to step up and take that job.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'd like to also echo Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, your comments and I like when I call you that you get back with me. I don't wait two or three days. You know, I call down there, get a page. That's, that's important to us. You know, we don't sit around and wait a day or two, so that was key and I'm glad that you got this job. Okay?
Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Heyburger.
Thank you. I have more report to do, I forgot. I'm ready to cut the cake.
Back to work.
Moving on to the police department. The police department participated in escorting Santa to the lighting ceremony downtown and passed out snowflake wands to the children in attendance. For the fire department, station three firefighters along with our community impact officer, impact or assisted OGO's mobile food pantry at three locations which included Churchwell Park, Orlando Pace Park, and New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. Six hundred and fifty-seven people were served. Sandusky Fire will continue to help and donate time to OGO on the first and third Thursday of every month. Also, Sandusky Fire assisted in the celebration of escorting the Sandusky Blue Streaks to Bellevue for the playoff game. Once there a community impact officer and another firefighter grilled burgers and hot dogs for the tailgate party put on by the Sandusky High School boosters. So thank you to the fire department of that and also just love to say, you know, congratulations to the Blue Streaks and what was a pretty incredible run in the playoffs. Obviously, it didn't end the way that everybody hoped it would, but I think they really captured the excitement of the town and I know that they were a pretty junior-heavy squad, so we should look forward to a great season again next year. Also, the finance department, both the administrative benefit review committee and the finance committee have recommended two and a half percent cost of living adjustments for non-bargaining employees effective for the first pay period of 2019. The next step is to have the city commission approve this recommendation. I'd ask for a motion to consider that request.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Heyburger.
Thank you. I have more report to do, I forgot. I'm ready to cut the cake.
Back to work.
Moving on to the police department. The police department participated in escorting Santa to the lighting ceremony downtown and passed out snowflake wands to the children in attendance. For the fire department, station three firefighters along with our community impact officer, impact or assisted OGO's mobile food pantry at three locations which included Churchwell Park, Orlando Pace Park, and New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. Six hundred and fifty-seven people were served. Sandusky Fire will continue to help and donate time to OGO on the first and third Thursday of every month. Also, Sandusky Fire assisted in the celebration of escorting the Sandusky Blue Streaks to Bellevue for the playoff game. Once there a community impact officer and another firefighter grilled burgers and hot dogs for the tailgate party put on by the Sandusky High School boosters. So thank you to the fire department of that and also just love to say, you know, congratulations to the Blue Streaks and what was a pretty incredible run in the playoffs. Obviously, it didn't end the way that everybody hoped it would, but I think they really captured the excitement of the town and I know that they were a pretty junior-heavy squad, so we should look forward to a great season again next year. Also, the finance department, both the administrative benefit review committee and the finance committee have recommended two and a half percent cost of living adjustments for non-bargaining employees effective for the first pay period of 2019. The next step is to have the city commission approve this recommendation. I'd ask for a motion to consider that request.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Heyburger.
Thank you. I have more report to do, I forgot. I'm ready to cut the cake.
Back to work.
Moving on to the police department. The police department participated in escorting Santa to the lighting ceremony downtown and passed out snowflake wands to the children in attendance. For the fire department, station three firefighters along with our community impact officer, impact or assisted OGO's mobile food pantry at three locations which included Churchwell Park, Orlando Pace Park, and New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. Six hundred and fifty-seven people were served. Sandusky Fire will continue to help and donate time to OGO on the first and third Thursday of every month. Also, Sandusky Fire assisted in the celebration of escorting the Sandusky Blue Streaks to Bellevue for the playoff game. Once there a community impact officer and another firefighter grilled burgers and hot dogs for the tailgate party put on by the Sandusky High School boosters. So thank you to the fire department of that and also just love to say, you know, congratulations to the Blue Streaks and what was a pretty incredible run in the playoffs. Obviously, it didn't end the way that everybody hoped it would, but I think they really captured the excitement of the town and I know that they were a pretty junior-heavy squad, so we should look forward to a great season again next year. Also, the finance department, both the administrative benefit review committee and the finance committee have recommended two and a half percent cost of living adjustments for non-bargaining employees effective for the first pay period of 2019. The next step is to have the city commission approve this recommendation. I'd ask for a motion to consider that request.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Heyburger.
Thank you. I have more report to do, I forgot. I'm ready to cut the cake.
Back to work.
Moving on to the police department. The police department participated in escorting Santa to the lighting ceremony downtown and passed out snowflake wands to the children in attendance. For the fire department, station three firefighters along with our community impact officer, impact or assisted OGO's mobile food pantry at three locations which included Churchwell Park, Orlando Pace Park, and New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. Six hundred and fifty-seven people were served. Sandusky Fire will continue to help and donate time to OGO on the first and third Thursday of every month. Also, Sandusky Fire assisted in the celebration of escorting the Sandusky Blue Streaks to Bellevue for the playoff game. Once there a community impact officer and another firefighter grilled burgers and hot dogs for the tailgate party put on by the Sandusky High School boosters. So thank you to the fire department of that and also just love to say, you know, congratulations to the Blue Streaks and what was a pretty incredible run in the playoffs. Obviously, it didn't end the way that everybody hoped it would, but I think they really captured the excitement of the town and I know that they were a pretty junior-heavy squad, so we should look forward to a great season again next year. Also, the finance department, both the administrative benefit review committee and the finance committee have recommended two and a half percent cost of living adjustments for non-bargaining employees effective for the first pay period of 2019. The next step is to have the city commission approve this recommendation. I'd ask for a motion to consider that request.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Heyburger.
Thank you. I have more report to do, I forgot. I'm ready to cut the cake.
Back to work.
Moving on to the police department. The police department participated in escorting Santa to the lighting ceremony downtown and passed out snowflake wands to the children in attendance. For the fire department, station three firefighters along with our community impact officer, impact or assisted OGO's mobile food pantry at three locations which included Churchwell Park, Orlando Pace Park, and New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. Six hundred and fifty-seven people were served. Sandusky Fire will continue to help and donate time to OGO on the first and third Thursday of every month. Also, Sandusky Fire assisted in the celebration of escorting the Sandusky Blue Streaks to Bellevue for the playoff game. Once there a community impact officer and another firefighter grilled burgers and hot dogs for the tailgate party put on by the Sandusky High School boosters. So thank you to the fire department of that and also just love to say, you know, congratulations to the Blue Streaks and what was a pretty incredible run in the playoffs. Obviously, it didn't end the way that everybody hoped it would, but I think they really captured the excitement of the town and I know that they were a pretty junior-heavy squad, so we should look forward to a great season again next year. Also, the finance department, both the administrative benefit review committee and the finance committee have recommended two and a half percent cost of living adjustments for non-bargaining employees effective for the first pay period of 2019. The next step is to have the city commission approve this recommendation. I'd ask for a motion to consider that request.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Heyburger.
Thank you. I have more report to do, I forgot. I'm ready to cut the cake.
Back to work.
Moving on to the police department. The police department participated in escorting Santa to the lighting ceremony downtown and passed out snowflake wands to the children in attendance. For the fire department, station three firefighters along with our community impact officer, impact or assisted OGO's mobile food pantry at three locations which included Churchwell Park, Orlando Pace Park, and New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. Six hundred and fifty-seven people were served. Sandusky Fire will continue to help and donate time to OGO on the first and third Thursday of every month. Also, Sandusky Fire assisted in the celebration of escorting the Sandusky Blue Streaks to Bellevue for the playoff game. Once there a community impact officer and another firefighter grilled burgers and hot dogs for the tailgate party put on by the Sandusky High School boosters. So thank you to the fire department of that and also just love to say, you know, congratulations to the Blue Streaks and what was a pretty incredible run in the playoffs. Obviously, it didn't end the way that everybody hoped it would, but I think they really captured the excitement of the town and I know that they were a pretty junior-heavy squad, so we should look forward to a great season again next year. Also, the finance department, both the administrative benefit review committee and the finance committee have recommended two and a half percent cost of living adjustments for non-bargaining employees effective for the first pay period of 2019. The next step is to have the city commission approve this recommendation. I'd ask for a motion to consider that request.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
That motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Heyburger. Thank you.
My concern would also be, you know, how the folks on McCartney Road, I mean, I'd like to get some understanding of how they would feel about a partial or complete assessment of the sidewalk. I mean, it's, it's something that we can certainly talk about, but we obviously want to have the input of the residents in the area who would be directly impacted, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
May I suggest in terms, you talked about the differences between the two, that sidewalks in any area is, improves the, improves things for all of us. We're talking about the making places agreeable or amenable to where people want to move to and the biggest problem that, and I've said this before, we have is attracting people to live here and putting in sidewalks in terms of its ability to get people to say, gee, it's safe to move on this street and put my kids in is of value to the entire community. We need incomes and folks moving into, into the community, especially in light of, and I hesitate to say this, but if we can put in kayak ramps, sidewalks, I mean, that benefits a minimal number of people and I voted yes to do that, but comparing that to a complete neighborhood and making it more agreeable to people coming here, I think is, they're at least equal in terms of, for consideration.
Well, I would suggest that we get some costs together and figure out a way to poll the McCartney Road residents to see how they would feel about some partial assessment. I mean, there, there, I, I, I would also like to know of the other neighborhoods in the area, how many of those property owners paid for a hundred percent of their sidewalk and how many of those sidewalks were paid for by the city, because I suspect that the answer is going to be in every single other neighborhood out on the West End, that those were all property improvements paid for by the property owner. But I'd like to know that for history and for, for equity purposes.
Yeah, I could get, I could, we'll wait and see. They'll get it back to you, because I do know examples of this that have, would impact that whole way. No problem.
Through the, through the commission president to the commission, I think it is really valuable for staff to hear from the commission and from the, the audience, the commitment to walkability. You know, walkability is generally in planning circles, a term that's probably about a decade old at this point, but it's something that I just want to make sure people understand is thought of in terms not only of if a neighborhood has a sidewalk, it is walkable. Walkability is, is thought about as you have to have places to walk to within the neighborhood as well. And so, you know, Tim mentioned the overall walk score of Sandusky as being a forty-eight. My guess is if you actually plug in an address to walkscore.com on McCartney Road, it would be significantly lower than that. If you plugged in a more centrally located address in the city, say Central Avenue, I know, for example, score is about eighty-seven out of a hundred. And again, it's not necessarily just because they have sidewalks, but it's because they live in a residential neighborhood, sidewalks where one can walk to a church or to a corner store or to a doctor's office or many of those other amenities. And I really do think with, with the planning for McCartney, and that's why we focused on maintenance in the areas where Sandusky is already walkable and we're looking at bikeability, et cetera, but the trend towards walkability, a lot of that is, is looking at, you know, a dollar that we put in a sidewalk, say if it was not assessed to a property owner, is ultimately a dollar that we're not necessarily putting into a local street, you know, paving a local street. And so we just wanted to make sure that there's a return on investment that is appropriate
Mr. Poole?
May I suggest, in terms of, you talked about the differences between the two, that sidewalks in any area improves the, improves things for all of us. We're talking about the making places agreeable or amenable to where people want to move to, and the biggest problem that, and I've said this before, we have is attracting people to live here. And putting in sidewalks in terms of its ability to get people to say, gee, it's safe to move on this street and put my kids in, is of value to the entire community. We need incomes, and folks moving into the community, especially in light of, and I hesitate to say this, but if we can put in kayak ramps, sidewalks, I mean, that benefits a minimal number of people, and I voted yes to do that, but comparing that to a complete neighborhood and making it more agreeable to people coming here, I think is, they're at least equal in terms of, for consideration.
Well, I would suggest that we get some costs together and figure out a way to poll the McCartney Road residents to see how they would feel about some partial assessment. I mean, there are, I would also like to know of the other neighborhoods in the area, how many of those property owners paid for 100% of their sidewalk, and how many of those sidewalks were paid for by the city? Because I suspect that the answer's going to be in every single other neighborhood out on the West End, that those were all property improvements paid for by the property owner. But I'd like to know that for history and for equity purposes.
Yeah, I could get, I could, we'll wait and see. They'll get it back here, because I do know examples of this that would impact that. We'll wait. No problem.
Through the Commission President to the Commission, I think it is really valuable for staff to hear from the Commission and from the audience, the commitment to walkability. You know, walkability is generally, in planning, circles a term that's probably about a decade old at this point, but it's something that I just want to make sure people understand is thought of in terms not only of if a neighborhood has a sidewalk, it is walkable. Walkability is thought about as you have to have places to walk to within the neighborhood as well. And so, you know, Tim mentioned the overall walk score of Sandusky as being a 48. My guess is if you actually plug in an address to walkscore.com on McCartney Road, it would be significantly lower than that if you plugged in a more centrally-located address in the city, say Central Avenue. I know, for example, score is about 87 out of 100. And again, it's not necessarily just because they have sidewalks, but it's because they live in a residential neighborhood with sidewalks, where one can walk to a church, or to a corner store, or to a doctor's office, or many of those other amenities. And I really do think with the planning for McCartney, and that's why we focused on maintenance in the areas where Sandusky is already walkable, and we're looking at bikeability, et cetera, but the trend towards walkability, a lot of that is looking at, you know, a dollar that we put in a sidewalk, say if it was not assessed to a property owner, is ultimately a dollar that we're not necessarily putting into a local street, you know, paving a local street. And so we just wanted to make sure that there's a return on investment that is appropriate, and being that McCartney is more of a rural road, or has more of a rural character, I thought that, I think the decision was made internally that to add a sidewalk there may not get you necessarily the return on the investment that you'd have to make to do the sidewalk. That doesn't mean a road like McCartney, and that's probably why most of Perkins Township is without sidewalks, unless you're along a major artery, because they've made similar decisions for also sort of semi-rural density places. That doesn't mean that you could never be in a position where a McCartney made sense to put in a sidewalk, but it's a different thing, I would argue, than the sidewalks, for example, that we added at Central Park along West Monroe Street, because what that did is filled in a gap where people were already walking quite a bit to better connect that. So all that being said, is we really, as a staff, and particularly in planning, Angie's not here tonight, or she could be speaking to this, greatly value walkability and want the entire city to feel walkable. That's why Venice is slated for the pathway and the sidewalk, but there is a cost-benefit analysis that we should talk about how we do, as to whether it makes sense in a particular location to add that expenditure. Ultimately, that should be the City Commission's goal, though, and I think, you know, we greatly believe that the more resources we invest in making Sandusky walkable, you will see those economic development benefits, but it might be different on a McCartney than it would say in a place where there's more mixes of uses and amenities to actually be walked to, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the discussion.
Mr. Chairman?